How are you?
The water is there, it's high. We can look right over there.
Really?
Mm-hmm. So kids are looking through the back holes. I mean, that's...
Yeah, that's a problem.
Yeah.
So I told Bing he must have got it to the altar. So that has a special patrol.
And move them around. It's a sad day if somebody wants to watch me.
Next year we'll probably move there. Patrol was made to John Foster to build a wall.
That is good.
To block them.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would stand and recite the pledge with us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Zerring.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Reese. Mayor Bowman.
Present. Thank you. We do have a quorum. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board and staff and audience. We have a couple of proclamations tonight, and one of those I'm going to do right now for Fire Prevention Week, and I'll invite Chief Myler. Good evening, sir. How are you this evening? Wonderful. Here comes the crew. Part of it. Okay, awesome. How are y'all? Good, I'm good. I'm good. Introduce your crew.
This is Captain Dwayne Gertie and firefighter EMT Emily Thompson and then you have Caitlin Junkling. She's a firefighter paramedic. You have Sarah Cozad, who's a firefighter EMT. You have new hire here, Joe Paris, who's a firefighter EMT. And then you have Tom Raderman, firefighter paramedic.
Hey, Tom, how are you?
Well, welcome all. Gosh, don't they look young? All of them. Tom and Dwayne, too. Well, we're really proud to have you here and thank you for all you do to protect our city. Fire Prevention Week, I'm going to make this proclamation and I'll share it with you. It says, whereas the city of Harrisonville is committed to ensuring the safety of all of its residents, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and whereas the Harrisonville...
(applause) Gather in so we can do a photo. Yeah, they're really excited. Just do one with masks and then let them take our masks down.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine. There you go. Perfect. All right. One, two, three. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see Barbara Gay here, so we're going to go ahead and proceed in our agenda, and if she arrives, we'll do her proclamation in a few moments. Well, good evening again. We have two of our aldermen attending by Zoom. Alderman Mills and Alderman Reese. We'll move on to the agenda, to the public participation. Mr. Ratliff, do we have any agenda request forms?
No, maybe.
No, okay. Moving on then, to the approval of the minutes. I'd like to ask you to silence your cellphones at this time, if you haven't already done so, and also your computers. The first is the minutes of the Board of Aldermen work session, September 15th. They've been in your packet. Those are the minutes from the retreat. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay. The motion is from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. The minutes of the regular meeting of the board, September 20th, also were in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion for Alman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Davidson. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. The minutes of the work session, September 20th, also were in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. The agenda items, the first is the Love the Harrisonville Square Annual Report. I think we have Amanda Stites with us. Do we have any staff introducing her? I guess not. Everybody knows you. Where is Baby Bennett tonight?
He's at home with Daddy.
Okay.
They're hanging out. We'll see how messy my house is.
If you would push the button on your microphone so we can all hear you. Excellent. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be with you all again. It's been a year since I last had a chance to talk to you about Love the Harrisonville Square. So tonight, I want to just take you through and update you a little bit on the progress that we've made in the past year and some of the next steps and challenges that we see ahead of us. So I am Amanda Stites. I am president-elect of the Love the Harrisonville Square organization, and I will be taking over that presidency come January. So you should have the packet of information that I'm going to take you through tonight already, and I'm going to really just kind of hit some highlights in here and, of course, be able to answer any questions that you might have about our organization. So to start, if you're not super familiar with Love the Harrisonville Square, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that is community-led and volunteer-driven, and our mission really is all about revitalization of our downtown district. When I say downtown district, instead of the historic Harrisonville Square, which we know is at the heart of that district, but because our district actually expands beyond the footprint of the historic district itself, so you'll see a map of that in your information. And we brought in that because we think it's important to pull in some of those other organizations and businesses that really, you know, make our downtown a great place to be. So the last time I talked to you, we were completing our affiliate grant process, which was a two-year educational period where we learn about how to become a Main Street America and a Missouri Main Street organization. So last year, we completed that, and we are now just considered an affiliate community in their tiered system with both of those organizations. And what that means is that we're meeting the following criteria that you have in your deck. So we have established our downtown organization. We have regular attendance at quarterly workshops, the national conference, which we attended this year, the state conference. So we're doing those things to kind of take those ideas from the national and state level back here to Harrisonville. We also are following the Main Street four-point approach to revitalization. We have our organizations set up. We're submitting quarterly reporting, which goes to the state and then back to the national level. And we have our diversified and sustainable funding base, which we'll talk a little bit more about later. And our next step in that tiered system would be to move from an affiliate community to be a fully accredited community, which is our goal. But to do that, we're missing a few key pieces. That would be, one, to have a paid executive director. That's a requirement to move to that accredited category. And also to complete the Main Street America 10-point certification. A lot of the things that would be included in that 10-point certification, we actually have in place, but we'd have to go through that process to be certified. So now the exciting stuff, which is the things that happened over the last year in our district. So I'm excited, so we've seen a lot of good things happen in downtown Harrisonville. I'm sure you've seen them yourself. So new businesses. We have 1886 that's opened up in the past year. Amazingly Ageless Med Spa moved downtown. Robins Nest Boutique is a new retail store that's opened in our district. Service Tech Solutions came downtown, and we also have Wildflower Photography. We've also seen some of our businesses expand or reopen. Most notably, the Wellness Counseling Center now offers yoga. So they refinished a room in their facility to offer those services. And Birdie's Boutique is now open with regular hours again. And we've seen some new investment and significant property changes. Most exciting, I think, are the renovations that you've all probably been watching closely to, right? On the corner of Independence and Pearl Street and the building on Lexington. So we're really excited to see those get some love and attention. That said, with a lot of that progress, I think it highlights some of the challenges that remain and kind of makes them a little more vast to accomplish and get over. So some of those challenges include things like a higher-than-desired vacancy rate. We have some issues with absentee property owners in our district. That leads to deferred building maintenance, right? We have those historical buildings suffering, sometimes because of that deferred building maintenance. And then vandalism within the district has become an increasing problem that we're hearing from our property owners that we work with because, I think, related to that vacancy rate. So some of the things that our organization is doing through the training that I mentioned is looking for tools to put in our toolkit to help address that issue. One that I think we would love to talk to you all more about at some point in the future that we just recently learned about is something called a vacancy ordinance. I'll just give you a real quick overview on that because we're looking for some more information to help make the case for where it's been successful, I think, in other communities. But the idea is that there would be a fee attached for building and property owners who are not actively selling, leasing, or renovating a property. Their strategy is to let it sit actively vacant, right? So it's kind of a disincentive for that being their long-term goal. Because we have these great businesses, we want to have them downtown, we need buildings to put them in. So anyway, looking for those kinds of ideas, you know, out of that training that we can bring back here that might be successful in helping us move forward. So all of that goes into, you know, our ultimate goal of revitalization. You have some information in your deck about how we do that through the four-point approach. That includes economic vitality, design, organization, and promotion, as well as our transformation strategies, which are all about kind of looking at what is unique in our community, who makes up our community, and making sure that we're addressing what they want in their downtown. And then we use that approach and our four points to make it happen. So also in your information, I have, you know what our current and ongoing projects are? I'm going to highlight a couple that I think are really exciting. I'll start with design. That group is tasked with kind of the beautification of downtown, but really addressing the look and feel. Downtown should be a place that's welcoming to, you know, all of our citizens, and that is their main mission. So design has been up to a lot of exciting things this year. One thing that's new, we have designed and implemented a series of seasonal banners for antique light posts. Those get switched out, so I hope you've been paying attention and seen some of our new seasonal designs go up. We just put up our fall ones in time for the Log Cabin Festival. We've continued with our facade grant program. That continues to be a big success. So this year, we offered $5,800 of our organization's money as a grant to our small business and property owners in downtown. What we got back for that is a $20,000-plus total planned improvement of projects and improvements for signage, for things to the outside of the building that are just going to make downtown look just that much sharper. We're working right now and hoping to get this done by end of the year or early in quarter one, a placemaking project. So this will be going in this space right behind Crown Realty. And if you think about coming to the square, that's really kind of your main entry point there off mechanic on Independence. So it'll be a mural-type project that will be kind of a welcome to the district in an otherwise unused space. So we're really excited about that and working with a well-known artist who does murals in the Kansas City area to design that artwork for us. And we're also buying an additional bench for the square because we have more people that come to our district and hang out and actually want to be downtown, and we think that's a great new story. So we were asked to do that, to add some additional seating, and we're happy to do that and look into expanding that program go forward. We've continued to do a lot of things as far as economic vitality goes, but primarily, we hope to be a connection point between, you know, people who are interested in opening a business in downtown Harrisonville and the city. So Jim Clark's been great to work with. I know I've passed several prospective new business owners his way and vice versa for that support, so we continue to do those things and also make sure that we have low-barrier entrepreneurship opportunities available to get people started, to give them an entry into the marketplace. And we do that through our programs like the Harrisonville Farmers and Artists Market, Junk in the Trunk Flea Market, and the Winter Market, which are zero costs or incredibly low cost to get them started. In organization, we do a lot of stuff there, including the continued education that I talked about earlier. Some new things that we added to our list of accomplishments were grant writing. So we applied for and received a $1,000 matching grant from the Missouri Department of Agriculture. We used that money to help market the Harrisonville Farmers and Artists Market, which I'm happy to say had its record-opening customer count for an opening day. We had over 500 customers come out for opening day at the Harrisonville Farmers and Artists Market this year, which is tremendous. And we are also really focused on getting some new volunteers involved with the organization, in particular, some younger folks. So we want them to be engaged in civic life as well. But as far as volunteer hours, I always have to, I get so excited about this number. So this year, we are on track to log 1,790 volunteer hours, and I think this is amazing. If you take those volunteer hours and you assign a dollar amount to it, that means we're getting an over $22,000 investment back in the community just through the volunteer hours of both professional-level work and just, you know, regular, roll up your sleeves and let's clean it up kind of work. Promotion, our last four-point, some things that I'm excited about here. This committee does a lot with events. I hope you had a chance to either see the pictures in the South Cast Tribune, which was fantastic, or be at the bicentennial yourself. It was a great day. So we did that, the market, the other things that I've mentioned. We've got more stuff coming up, including Small Business Saturday and Christmas on the Square, which we know the whole community looks forward to. We are really talking to the community to see what their wants and needs are. I just included in this deck a little snapshot of, you know, what we reach out to as far as community goes through Facebook. So we have an estimated annual reach of over 51,000 right now, which is fantastic. So the community, I think, has that opportunity to talk back to us, as well as us to them. And then I'll leave with, I think, one of our most recent undertakings, which is the Downtown Destination Marketing Project. So I don't know if you've been southbound on I-49 lately, but there is a large billboard there, which was installed on September 8th. It advertises Historic Downtown Harrisonville is a great place to come, shop, dine, and unwind. We've been able to take that, so that's kind of the keystone of that campaign for downtown. But we were combining that with other elements, including an online visitor survey and online visitors guide, which points out, right, the different businesses in downtown that you may want to visit. And coming soon, we're also going to have a printed visitor's map that can be in our area businesses, which will have the information for the survey so we can collect some, you know, customer demographic information and also help spread the word about this jewel that we have in our downtown. So that was really quick. All the things that we've been doing in the past year and continue to do. All of those things are made possible, of course, by our funding that we received last year. So to kind of wrap things up, you have there what our funding mix was in 2021. So really, most of our funding comes from private funding and event revenues. So we ask for people in the community to partner with us and invest in having a vibrant downtown. 3% of that budget came from grants. And then the city of Harrisonville was very generous and provided us a budgetary line item for reimbursable expenses of up to $15,000, making up about 45% of that total funding mix. As I hope I illustrated quickly, we're a busy group. We're taking on a lot of projects, and we hope to continue to grow and take on additional projects that have a more substantial impact on downtown and, of course, the surrounding city of Harrisonville. And as we do that, we think that it's also critical that we continue to be able to scale that funding accordingly. So you have here what we're hoping will be our 22 funding mix, which would include a step up in our private partnership and sponsorship to 20,000, a step up in our grants and funding, so doubling that to 2,000, and then an increase in the public partnership from 15 to 18,000. By securing that funding, that diversified mix, we hope to be able to continue to do the level of projects that we have now, but take on, you know, again, those kind of projects that can bring additional value to the city of Harrisonville. So I will stop talking. Thank you for your time and your partnership. In meeting with a lot of other communities in Missouri, we're incredibly thankful for the partnership and the strong relationship that we've built with the city. Thank you for that, and we hope to continue to enjoy that in the future. Be happy to take any questions that you have.
Do any members of the board have any questions for Amanda? I see you have a couple of your volunteers with you.
I do.
Would you like to introduce them to the members of the board?
I do. So I have Ms. Cheryl Bush, who leads our design committee, in charge of beautification and making the district a welcoming place to be, and Ms. Rhonda Woodley, also in design committee, and both of these fine ladies are also on our Board of Directors.
Good job.
Well, y'all do a great job. Absolutely a great job.
Thank you.
And I would just encourage you and all of your volunteers, people who really care about the square, to be part of the comprehensive plan. You know, we have the first public meeting coming up, October 19th, and it would just mean an awful lot to the outcome of that plan for Love the Square members to be there, so...
I've reminded our board members several times already.
I bet you have. Well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
All right, moving down the agenda then. Chief Hofer, in his October breast cancer awareness pink blazer, is going to come and talk to us about the youth hunt for 2022. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the board, before you, tonight is a annual youth hunt. Phil Needham, the Missouri Conservation Agent, on a Saturday in early January, will have a youth hunt or youth safety course that he likes to take him out hunting the next day or two. So that's what he's requesting to do. This has gone on for probably eight or nine years. We've never had any problems. He goes to the little pond behind the Justice Center, which is in city limits. That's why he's asking permission because it's illegal to shoot projectiles up within city limits. So we've had no problems with it. We are recommending approval again this year. Entertain any questions.
Does the board have any questions for the chief?
I would recommend approval.
A second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second. It's a tie. A second from Alderman Davidson. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Thank you. So the youth hunt is approved then for next year, chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're up for the next item also, which is Pearl Street Halloween.
Yes, Mayor. This is a request by the applicant Vanessa Zorro to have a Safe Halloween Trick or Treat Block Party. It will be October 31st, which is a Sunday evening this year. They're requesting to block from Halsey Street to Worth Street. My memo said to Price, which is incorrect. It's from Halsey to Worth. We've had no problems with this last year and recommend approval again for this year, and it goes from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I will add a side note that I received an application today for a second block party, which goes from Price Street to Halsey. We've had some concerns, Superintendent Jacobs and I, with closing Halsey Street because it really backs up traffic because it's a couple blocks off the highway. They really have nowhere to go. So we've been reluctant to close Halsey Street. So I am going to suggest we have two separate block parties and maybe have some crossing guards there at Halsey Street. But you'll have that at the next meeting. So we're recommending approval for this one, October 31st, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Goes from Halsey Street to Worth Street, which is regular.
And I noticed that it is contingent on your hope that there would be some citizens there that would prevent the barricades from being set aside.
They did a good job with that last year, manning the barricades. I think being a Sunday night might be a little better. First night, the first year we had this, it was a work night, and people were coming home.
Yes.
They were blocked off and removing them and not putting them back, and then traffic was coming in and kind of averting the purpose of what we're trying to do there. But if you have the two separate, who would you plan on manning that area on Halsey? An officer or just citizens? It won't be an officer. It may be, would ask the VIPS if they would be interested in doing it, or have the block party people have a neighborhood person there.
Any other questions for the chief about this event?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner. A roll call, please, Dan.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Thank you. That event permit request for the Halloween party on Pearl Street is approved. Moving on, Council Bill 81.
Council Bill 081 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, directing city staff to acquire necessary temporary and permanent easements to permit engineering, construction, and completion of the South Service Area Force Main Gravity and Lift Station Sanitary Sewer Project, pursuant to Council Bill 081.
Good evening, Mr. Brooks.
Good evening, ma'am, Mayor, and Board of Aldermen.
Tell us about this council bill.
This ordinance tonight is to allow city staff to write letters to property owners at the same time we're negotiating with property owners, but yet it also starts our condemnation process, unfortunately. If you recall, in the past, the city and the county have already entered into an agreement to basically use the county road right-of-way to put this project in. However, there is some private property owners that we have to cross between where the Walmart Distribution Wastewater Treatment Plant is currently located and East 275th Street. So we're not in road right-of-way the entire way. So that kind of sets up why we have to do this ordinance. As I mentioned, we've got Walmart down there at the south end of town. As I mentioned, we've got Walmart down there. It's a south end of town. It's served by a packaged wastewater treatment plant. It's been there for 20 years and it's literally held together with duct tape and baling wire. I'm serious. It's served its useful lifelessness of that project. And the city engineer has already looked at, is it cheaper just to keep building wastewater treatment, packaged treatment plants, or put in a series of lift stations and force mains and gravity mains? And there is a graph and a chart in your packet that kind of shows over time, it's less costly to put in the package, I'm sorry, put in the pump system with force mains and gravity mains. As I mentioned, this ordinance will allow city staff to continue to negotiate with the affected property owners to obtain the necessary temporary and permanent easements. And we have to acquire temporary easements, permanent easements from 27 property owners over 30 parcels of land. And we've got one property owner that's south of East 275th Street. He doesn't, he doesn't live in the city, doesn't live in the county. And he really wants no part of easement negotiations. He just told me flat out, he said, Carl, buy me out. And I said, well, what's, what's your asking price? I know your property's for sale. That was north of a million dollars. Well, when you've only got $150,000 in your, I'm sorry, a half a million dollars in your easement budget, you can't buy one property for more than a million dollars. So the property has been appraised, all three parcels appraised at $1,500. And where we're planning to place this sanitary sewer on those three tracts of land, and if you want to refer to it in your, in your documents, on drawings 17, 18, and 19, it's within an existing 100-foot electric utility easement. He can't build on that property anyhow. And it's already an easement. And we want to take a very small part of that existing easement. So it's an easement on top of an easement. We just didn't make the assumption whenever that easement was written way back when. We didn't, we can't describe a sanitary sewer pipe as a pole or a wire. So we have to get another utility easement. So that's really the only area of this project that's probably going to require condemnation. While all this is going on, this ordinance gives us the right to send the letter to the property owner, make an offer with the easement. We'll send in the entire appraisal. I don't hold anything back. And they say, well, Carl, you're not showing me the whole thing. Yes, I am. That's the whole thing. That's what the Appraiser Appraisers Act. So staff recommends approval of this ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alderman Milner.
I've got a question. So, so out of the 27, I believe, our last conversation that we had, and we talked about it, and the majority of this is going down a road.
Yes, ma'am.
But yet we still have to get easement off of all of these people.
Because the center line of those property owners goes to the center of the road.
Okay.
But remember, Cass County has already given us the right to use their right-of-way. So we hope the property owners are understanding. And all the property owners that do have property to the center line of the road, they're like, great, put it in the road. Don't be on our property, but you can be out in the road.
So we're not necessarily going into anyone's property, one specific that I'm thinking of?
Not as a permanent easement, no.
So on Mrs. Kronicki's property, we are not going to take any of her property?
We're not taking any of her property.
Just wanted to clarify.
And she's fine with that.
Okay. She is fine with that?
She is fine with that.
Okay. Because I'll be waiting for my phone call. Just want to make sure we have no crosswords here.
She and I had a face-to-face conversation. She is fine with that.
Okay, excellent. So, and the one that's from, that's out of town, how much property of his are you? I mean, you're just basically looking at where already an easement is except 100 feet in?
We're already in an existing 100-foot easement and we're asking to take... There's no dimensions on here. So basically, probably a 20-foot permanent easement and probably the entire width of the 100-foot as a temporary. So they can stockpile dirt, gravel, pipe, and just be able to use the entire thing. Because with the exception of the buildings on there, there's, there's no one using that property. And anything the contractor tears up or, you know, disturbs, he has to repair.
To fix. And, and what we're going to suggest doing will not prohibit him from selling that property to someone else?
A condemnation does not prohibit.
No, I know. But I mean, we're not taking enough of it to really cause him...
No, it's an easement within an existing easement.
Okay, okay. Just making sure.
You can't build anything there anyhow.
Okay. I thought you were going inside beyond the easement.
No.
Okay. I misunderstood.
We're within 100% of that 100-foot easement.
Perfect. Thank you.
So it's not...
Alderman Zaring.
So it's not going to devalue his land, property, any of that? Any at all?
Well, that's what the Appraiser does. He looks at it before the improvement is done and after the improvement is done. And he says, because we're on his property and we're going to put a pipe in the ground, and one of those, actually, we're putting two pipes in the ground, and one of them is a gravity sewer. You know, in my, in my opinion, it actually increases the value of his property because it makes it sanitary sewer is available. Of course, the property would have to be annexed into the city. But, you know, so for his compensation, the Appraiser has done his due diligence and said, this is how much it is for each of those three parcels.
And then it's only going to go up. His property value is only going to go up by putting this thing in. It's not going to take it down at all.
I can't imagine why it would go down because now there's a sanitary sewer within an existing easement that they can't develop on anyhow.
Got you. And it's an agriculture area, or is it...
It was a, it was a business at one time.
Okay.
It's no longer a business. I don't know what it's currently zoned as.
But it's outside the city, right?
It's outside the city limits.
Now, Alderman Davidson.
I think you answered one question. It is going to be a pipe, so we're not putting, we're not putting one of the pump stations there. So that was my first question. We're not putting one of the pump stations there. We're putting one south of there at Sat Brothers. And then we're putting one at Walmart. Okay. And we're putting one basically at the north end on Brick Plant Road. Okay. Marvin. Spoken with Marvin. Have you, I mean, have you spoken? I haven't. Have you spoken with him? I have not spoken with him recently, but the plan is to not put it on Mr. Cochran's property, but put it on the east side of Brick Plant Road and not the west side of Brick Plant Road. And I think Marcy started, excuse me, Alderman, started to go there. Of the 20, I think there's 27 total property owners, you have spoken to 26, and if nothing else, gotten their verbal approval that they're not going to stand in the way. It's just the one that we're saying that it's going to stand in the way. Because I don't, I don't like eminent domain. I don't like condemnation. But in this particular case, the way you were explaining it with already being an easement, it doesn't, there's not an issue there. So I just want to make sure it wasn't any of the other 26. Between talking with them and emailing property owners, you know, and then putting the pipe in the road. Sure. They're all fine with where it's going. Okay, good. Nothing wrong.
They were not fine until we said, middle of the road.
You know, one of the things that, I'm, I'm pleased that we're finally getting this done because of the Walmart Distribution Center's lift station. And that's been a hazard to our staff every time they go out there and do anything to that. So I'm really glad this is moving forward. Any other questions from the board? Alderman Mills, Alderman Reese, questions from you?
No, thank you.
Okay, excellent. This is an ordinance, then. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the ordinance.
Do you want to suspend the rule?
I'm sorry. Yes, suspend the rule and...
And move it to a second reading.
Move it to a second reading, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. Okay, so the motion is from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to suspend the rule on Council Bill 81 and advance it to its second reading. May we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading?
Council 081 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, directing city staff to acquire necessary temporary and permanent easements to permit the engineering, construction, and completion of the South Service Area Force Main, Gravity, and Lift Station Sanitary Sewer Project, Secretary of Council 081.
And a roll call again, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 81 is approved and becomes ordinance 3569. Alderman Committee reports. Alderman Dorhoff?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Franklin?
I just wanted to thank everybody that came to the walking taco booth this weekend at the Log Cabin Festival. I believe we made over $1,100. We did really good, had a nice crowd. So I think everybody enjoyed themselves. Everybody was enjoying being outside and just getting out for a while, so.
We know that you're one of the ones that contributed to all those volunteer hours that Amanda was talking about. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Zaring.
I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Milner.
I have nothing.
Alderman Turner.
Nothing.
You're not going to talk about the parade?
We had a good turnout for the Log Cabin Festival and had a good parade. I think everyone enjoyed it. At least, and then went crossing down the hill instead of up the hill this time, so that helped. But just thanking them for coming out and helping make the festival a success and get it back to what it used to be like.
And thank you for walking with the band. I know that was, that was quite a hike there, but you did it. You did it in style. Alderman Davidson.
Well, and he didn't mention senior night. He was there at senior night too, Friday night, so. Nothing, nothing, Mayor. I do have one question on that last one. I just want to ask something. If for some reason somebody else popped up and we had to go after them in any way, shape, or form, other than voluntarily, would we be notified on the eminent domain on the last... Of the 20, there's 27, 26. We've got one that we know we're probably going to have to go after. What I'm asking is if one of the others, if one of the others decided to change their mind, I guess, would we be notified? That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Mauer will answer.
Sure. The answer is yes, because what will happen is we'll send out our notice letters. We'll try to negotiate a deal. If we can't reach a negotiation, then we will ultimately have to file suit. And before we would file suit, you all would learn about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Alderman Mills?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
And Alderman Reese?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the report from the city administrator, Mr. Ratliff.
Yes, ma'am. Remember, the fall citywide cleanup is scheduled for the night, which is this week. And then the stream cleanup for the South Grand River Watershed Alliance is on the 16th. And then the fall citywide brush drop-off is scheduled on the 5th and the 6th. You've seen the numbers for the water production and the gallons that we sold and the gallons that we lost for the month of September. It was 5.4%. Just remind everybody, 15% is the national average. So we're well below the percentages on that, which is good for our staff. The Ultra Disfection Project down at the wastewater treatment facility, the UV equipment concrete slab was poured this past week. Then Carl and Ted are reviewing the six bids that we received for City Lake and Lake Luna. The, the good news is some bids were under. Bad news is some bids were over. So hopefully the bids that were under were, had everything filled out and I's dotted and T's crossed because we want to get moving on that as quick as possible. And also, they started with the, and we put on Facebook as well, the sand blasting for the outdoor pool. Again, to reiterate with the experts on Facebook, the wheels of government turn slow for a purpose. And the purpose is that you, the elected body, has to budget and give budget authority to staff to be able to do the projects. And when the pool first started, we, the first year being closed, wasn't due to the disrepair. It was due to the COVID concerns. And as we got toward the end of that year, we found that there were serious problems with the pool. And then began to work to try to come with a funding mechanism to bring to the board to decide that funding mechanism to do. And then once that was completed, we then ended up into the next year. And if you all recall, moving it quickly, working with the contractor and the engineer at the same time, trying to do design, again, having to deal with the funding and everything that's involved with that. So I know that a lot of people, Monday morning quarterback, you all didn't have a crystal ball to know all that stuff was going to pop up. But we moved as fast as possible to get that accomplished. I'm thankful for the ones that comment on Facebook that watch this meeting and get their facts from this meeting. Thank you, citizens that do that. Then the airport runway project, the full pavement replacement. The city applied to, replied and received notice on the 4.95 grant from MODOT and the FAA with a 5% match from the State Aviation Trust. The city also received, also received the engineers' design agreement, and the agreement is currently under review. And their schedule is to bid the project April of 2022 with construction in 2023. So that's a very good letter that we received back. And you all deserve a that-a-boy, a that-a-grail for the fruition to move forward in doing the engineering design and to show that the state and the federal, and the FAA, that we were serious about being a part, have that program and moving it up. Then the Parks Department, they met with Clark and Anderson to review the preliminary, the review of the preliminary North Park Ball Field renderings on Wednesday, September 29th. Again, for the experts on Facebook that say we have forgot about the baseball fields, we have not forgot about the baseball fields. You know, I haven't found the money tree to shake yet, but we're working on it. And, but part of that is, if you all recall from Grant's analysis that he gave you all at the last meeting, that's in the hopper, us reviewing those things to then, when that final design is done, to get that to the park board, get the park board to approve it, to get it to you all, to approve it as well. And then, once that is approved, then Ben's more than happy to come back and tell you all how to fund it. And if you also recall, the funding that you did on the short term with Community Center was in sight of doing this long-term as well. So that you would be able to fund it and take advantage of the low interest rates to get out ahead of the curve on the market. And so you'll be seeing some information on that. But just wanted to publicly say, we have not forgot about the ball fields or the promises of getting those ball fields completed. And then we, if some of you have driven by, the old Allen Bank is down and is being cleared, has been cleared off. The permit for the new Starbucks has been issued to go in that place. Some people have asked, why have a Starbucks building when you've got Starbucks in the grocery store? Well, you have a nice big building where people come in and can sit and visit and the wifi and the young people that like to hang out. And also, the most important thing to me is the drive-through. So that makes it a great opportunity as well. So, that makes it a, a great opportunity as well. And I was told this morning by somebody that was very happy about that, because the line for the one in Price Dropper was all the way out to the parking lot. And so, they were, they were happy to hear that that was coming along.
Country Club Bank.
Country Club, sorry. What did I say?
Allen.
I said Allen.
Saint.
And then, I wanted to, I have in, in front of you all, all the different meetings that are coming up with the master plan review. Please look at those, especially on the open house ones. To be on that, the, the one on the 19th with the community steering room and the technical committee, they'll be meeting on that in November the 3rd as well. They'll be meeting again, and then December the 1st will be the, the frameworks for the summit of the public open house. So, it's very important. We want everybody's input. Staff's also been putting together interview, different organizations throughout the community to make sure that we're getting their input as well. With that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. Questions from the media? Well, Dennis, in my comments, I want to congratulate you and members of the staff of the South Cass Tribune for those awards that you received for the Missouri Press Association. What an honor, what an honor. Congratulations. You know, as I think about Pat Thomas and before he passed away, and he was sharing with me what his vision was for a community newspaper, I know he would be pleased now if he were still with us to see what you've accomplished with the South Cass Tribune. You definitely are fulfilling his vision, and I feel like you're definitely helping us to move Harrisonville forward, so congratulations to you. And the other congratulations that I'd like to state is, I'd like to wish Andrew Warland, the Director of the Cass County Health Department, very best wishes from the City of Harrisonville as he takes on his new position as Health Director for the Platte County Health Department. And then I also would like to congratulate publicly Sarah Scheck, who has been promoted to the Director of the Cass County Health Department. I believe that's all going to take place October the 15th, and both of those people have worked very closely with the city and the county, particularly through the COVID pandemic, so I wish them both well. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
The motion is from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Franklin to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll adjourn for five minutes and then return at 7:00 PM for a work session. Good evening.